Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 14th, 2020. This is meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, council met earlier this evening to receive a briefing on the Thurston County Courthouse and Administrative Building Project. No decisions were made. For the record as well, we have a quorum. All members are present. Under announcements, I would like to ask our interim city manager Jay Burney to give us an update on the Fourth Avenue Bridge camp.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to provide an update. So, staff at the direction of the council have engaged over the past four months in looking at options for relocating the individuals currently living under the Fourth Avenue Bridge to a comparable, appropriate alternative location. The Concerned Clergy have also been assisting and participating in these discussions as we sought a comparable alternative. The Concerned Clergy, in cooperation with the residents and in coordination with the city, developed site rules and a memorandum of understanding for the role the Concerned Clergy could play. Despite this work, staff was not able to find a well-established housing or behavioral health organization with the capacity to contract with to manage the camp. Additionally, over the past few months, we have received considerable feedback from the community and regulatory agencies about their concerns over the environmental impacts of an encampment so close to the water. Our plan moving forward on the Fourth Avenue Bridge site is to offer all the individuals under the bridge a spot at our downtown mitigation site. We have enough spots to accommodate each of them, and the sites are clustered together should they want to locate next to each other at the site. City staff and our social service providers regularly visit the mitigation site, providing residents with support and the resources they need to move towards permanent housing. Residents also have access to storage and a safe and secure living environment. Our plan is to have all the residents relocated and the site cleared by January 27th. Between now and then, city staff, including our Crisis Response Unit and our familiar faces programs, will be working with the individuals under the bridge to assist them in any way we can in transitioning to the mitigation site, other shelter, or other options, as well as working on an overall site cleanup. I want to thank the Concerned Clergy for all of the assistance they provided both to the city and the individuals under the bridge in looking for alternatives and supporting their needs. I hope these kinds of conversations and this support will continue into the future as it takes all of us working together to find caring and compassionate solutions.
Thank you for that update. Now I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. You have an agenda, takes us to special recognition. We have two this evening. Item 2A is a proclamation recognizing the 30th anniversary of Homes First. And what I think I'd like to do is have Councilmember Gilman read the proclamation, and then we'll have the Executive Director, Trudy Sukup, come up and address the body, and then we'll get a picture taken. All right. So...
Right. Whereas access to safe, affordable housing is critical for our lowest-income families, including and especially seniors, those with disabilities and families. And whereas currently in Washington State, only 29 low-income housing units are available for every 100 low-income households, reflecting the staggering need for more affordable housing. And whereas numerous studies demonstrate the significant positive impact safe and stable housing has on the mental and physical health of children and adults alike. And whereas Homes First is a long-established provider of safe, healthy, and affordable housing in our community. And whereas Homes First has housed over 5,000 people in Olympia and Thurston County in scattered sites throughout our neighborhoods, helping tenants connect with the community in positive ways. And whereas Homes First continues to create innovative partnerships to best build community and increase affordable supportive housing options. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Olympia City Council recognizes the 30th anniversary of Homes First in Thurston County and their work to provide safe, healthy, and affordable housing in our community.
Oh, signed.
Oh, and here's the code. Here's the code. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, this 14th day of January 2020, for the Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. So, Trudy, do you want to come on up? And then...
On behalf of the Board of Directors and the staff and all our tenants, I want to give a special thank you to the City of Olympia. You have been with us since day one. Thirty years ago, when we were formed, the first two houses we developed were in the City of Olympia. They were houses that were on a piece of land that the City of Olympia was going to develop into the new fire station. At the time, that's what it was, the new fire station. And you sold us those houses for a dollar. We worked with Olympia Federal Savings and the Federal Home Loan Bank to get funds to buy a piece of land. And those two houses are still serving people. There are first two Oxford houses for Clean and Sober Living over on McCormick Street, a men's house and a women's house, side by side. So we have a special partnership in this effort that we do together. You continue to support us, which we really appreciate. I think 18 out of our 46 properties are in the City of Olympia, and we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you. So we appreciate what you are doing to try to move forward on providing more affordable housing in this community, and providing shelter, and providing a good life for everyone who lives in the City of Olympia. So again, on behalf of the board, one of our board members is here tonight, Thomasina Cooper. And she actually was the person who helped develop the proclamation, so it's a special thanks to her, too. She's been integral to making this happen. So thank you very much. We hope to be here another 30 years and continue to grow and grow with the City of Olympia.
All right. Are there any comments from the days? Councilmember Gilman.
I also want to recognize that beyond providing these units of housing, Trudy has led Homes First involvement in the whole conversation about affordable housing and access to housing in Thurston County, and has also served in a leadership role within our Thurston Thrives region-wide conversation around affordable housing. And I think we all benefit greatly from that leadership and the conversation about affordable housing also. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Partially.
I just simply want to say thank you, both for the leadership of your organization and for modeling the kind of partnerships we need to encourage and grow. So, thank you very much.
I have a quick question. Can you explain for our viewing audience your relationship with Merritt Manor that's going to be opening up here this week?
Well, actually, as of today...
It's a new line of business for you.
They got their first certificate of occupancy. Woo-hoo! Today! This is the day. First floor is ready for occupancy. Thank you, City of Olympia permitting. It is ready to go. And we hope to have the second floor up very soon, and we're just waiting for the last permits on the elevator to get the third floor up. So, we are a partner, a front-facing partner on the Merritt Manor project. So, along with the City of Olympia, again, who provided a multi-family tax exemption for the owners. So this is a private market development by Glenn Wells and Scott Womack. And they have, with the help of a community donation of land and the multi-family tax exemption, the first 12-year exemption for the City of Olympia, have built this 82-unit, two- and three-bedroom apartment complex. And it's really aimed at people who are making, have a job, they're making some money, but they don't make enough money to afford market-rate housing. So we are that front-facing property manager who is going to manage the needs of the tenants. So as they come in and people are, you know, this is probably a little higher level than most of us are working with. So traditionally, Homes First is working primarily with people at 50% or less of area median income. And Merritt Manor is really looking at the 60% to 80% or the working poor, right? Got a job, maybe you're a cashier or else, and you just don't make quite enough. So, but folks are still going to be moving in with some challenges, right? Where do I find? How do I get? How do I get connected with? And so we're going to be helping them with that. So we don't really do case management, but we call it tenant navigation, tenant services navigation.
Sounds great. And for those of you that don't know, the Merritt Manor complex is on the former Bailey's Motor Lodge, Motor Hotel land. So it's right across from Providence St. Peters on a transit corridor and how it's just a great story of public and nonprofit, sorry, private nonprofit with a little bit of public permitting assistance.
And Olly Fed again.
And Olly Fed.
Has stepped in, our great local bank to...
Great partner.
Yeah. Partner on that.
Thank you so much. So we'll come down and get a picture taken then?
Yay!
All right.
Thank you.
Kelly, ready for that? The council's looking younger. On to item 2B, which is another special recognition. And this is recognizing another 30th anniversary, and that's of Mix 96, or their official name is KXXO. And they've been serving our Puget Sound area since 1990. And to read their proclamation, I'd like to ask Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Whereas for 30 years, radio station KXXO FM, locally owned by Tony Holm and David Rowe, housed the historical Rockaway Leland Building in downtown Olympia and have, has been serving the Olympia area. And whereas, since January 1990, KXXO, also known as Mix 96, has been a staple of the Olympia media scene and a place on the dial where Olympia area listeners are treated to the community-focused family radio. And whereas, KXXO regularly sponsors two major on-air fund drives to support the Little Red Schoolhouse Project efforts to provide school supplies and the Holiday Connections Program to help children and families over the holidays. And whereas, over the years, KXXO has employed hundreds of Olympians helping to support the local economy. And whereas, we celebrate KXXO's 30 years of being a cornerstone of the Olympia community. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Olympia City Council do hereby proclaim January 16th, 2020, as KXXO Radio Day in the City of Olympia, wishing them a happy 30th birthday and many years of success in our community. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, this 14th day of January 2020, Olympia City Council, Mayor Selby, or Cheryl Selby, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to invite Ty Flint to come accept the proclamation.
Thanks. Well, several of us at the station thought of this proclamation as an idea to honor Dave and Tony because they would be so embarrassed. And we're going to give them this at our little birthday party coming up here on Thursday. But Dave and Tony, they came to Olympia and they went to Evergreen State College, and they had this crazy idea that they wanted to put a radio station on the air, an FM station on the air. And they went through many years in licensing, and finally, 30 years ago Thursday, it took to the air. And it's a privilege, I've been in broadcasting for a long time, and it's a privilege to kind of come back home and work for a local station owned by local people that serve the local community. Because broadcasting has become a big monolith with corporate ownership of pretty much everything. So it's just nice to have this little station in Olympia. And certainly, thank you to the council and Mayor Selby. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. And I just want to also recognize the big work that our local radio stations do, especially when we have inclement weather. And I remember when my kids were in school, tuning in very early in the morning to hear the snow report and see which school was going to be closed.
That's a funny thing, because I grew up listening to Dick Pousse read the school reports.
Yep.
Here I am, all these years later, still reading school reports. And I said, well, people get it on their phones, they get it on, they've got an app for this.
Oh, they want to hear your voice.
But people like to hear it on the radio.
Yep.
So hopefully, hopefully, we'll escape, and we won't have any in the morning.
Yeah, we'll hopefully.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. All right. That takes us to this evening's public comment period. I only have, looks like, seven people signed up, so we'll easily fit into our first, our 30 minutes that's allotted. If you've signed up on this sheet, I'm assuming you've read all the rules about public comment. The big one is just that you have three minutes. There's a countdown clock over my right shoulder. And then we ask that you not speak to items that we are holding a public hearing on in the next 45 days, or in the last 45 days. There's only one of those from December still on the calendar. So if you speak about the CDBG Action Plan Amendment, I'll have to stop you. With that, I will get started. I've got, I cannot read the last name, maybe Bruce Polford? Bruce?
You said it right.
All right. Followed by Candy Mercer.
Sorry about my printing.
That's all right. It's your turn.
My...
It's your turn, you're first.
That ate a hole in my ears. Anyways, I didn't get everything that was going on with the whole meeting, but what I grasped real quick, and what I wanted to progress is, we want to make a better courthouse, whatever, and have them put together. And what put Washington on the map was marijuana. And marijuana building they do in South Africa, they do it around the world, it's a no-brainer as far as less of an expense. It's like 80%. Takes six years to, seven years to grow what the marijuana plant does in six months. And they're not smoking the walls. You know, it's just not that, you know? And as far as law enforcement, I remember when I was, lived in Ann Arbor, the marijuana law back in the 70s was $5 fine. It was a $500 fine for drinking a beer in the park, you know? Somehow have a, an area where we don't have to spend law enforcement money chasing people around. The homeless people will have to just learn how to respect other people. For the most part, some of them, you know, because I've been in and out of homelessness since I was six years old, so, you know, I generally have a house. It's another thing with the Washington law enforcement. But I suggest, if we are going to make that type of move, that we use that type of building, if it's so much cheaper and it's going to outlast what is being built here in the United States, why not use it? We're trying to save money here and not make money. You know, yeah, the carpenters' union or this or that, but when it comes down to materials, that material will get us a much lower cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Candy Mercer, followed by Linda Moniz.
Hi, I'm Candy Mercer. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I'm encouraged the progress the city has made on the homelessness issue over the past year, and I'm maybe more hopeful for your vision for the future. It seems as if you have heard us, which, for a while, did not seem like it was happening. So thank you. Thank you. In order to heal, Olympia is going to experience pain. There are people that are not going to like the changes to come. There are people who like the status quo. There are also people who want to keep Olympia ugly. The alt-left believes in KOV, keep on vandalizing. By encouraging encampments, they are using homeless people as pawns in their childish game of revolution. If you do not believe me, I'm going to read a paragraph from their own materials, an anarchist scene published in response to the city's attempt to make the Artesian Well a safe and friendly place for all. One paragraph. The subhead is vandalizing development. Vandalism costs money to clean up and threatens the places that are targeted. If the city wants the well to be a pristine space for capital workers to take a lunch break, we can make sure the experience is much less pleasant. This means graffiti and all kinds of creative means. Leaving garbage in the street, killing decorative plants, and generally breaking things are effective ways of showing that we don't approve of their developments. And vandalism costs them money. Vandalism also reminds us that property is not untouchable, but is something that can be altered or destroyed. As powerless as property can make us feel, vandalism reminds us that we have the power to shape our environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Moniz, followed by Annabelle Krishner.
Good evening, Mayor Selby. Thank you. I want to thank everyone on the council for all their hard work with the Fourth Avenue Bridge. I know it hasn't been easy, and I hope, I just hope this is a good start to helping our city. I just, I cut my speech in half, I just want to read part of it. And also, thank you, I understood that the Pear Street is being cleaned up, and I hope everybody's transitioned into whatever services that that person got offered. Chronically homeless are not living on our streets or green spaces because our city does not care about them. Chronically homeless are living on our streets and green spaces because they don't care about the community that has made comprehensive services available to them. Chronically homeless choose to remain on our streets and green spaces where they regularly violate city code. Chronically homeless refuse to utilize ready, available services, they're wasteful, irresponsible with their city's funds. Chronically homeless choose to continue their law-breaking lifestyles. Chronically homeless disproportionately utilize social services, stressing them. Chronically homeless negatively impact our downtown area, costing our city annually in terrorism dollars. Chronically homeless constitute a growing burden on our city's already troubled financial situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Annabelle Krishner, followed by Rose Gunderson.
Thank you for having me. I want to comment briefly on the proposed Green Cove Basin real estate development. I heard about this at a League of Women Voters meeting and then read an article in the Works in Progress newsletter. And I'm somewhat amazed that this is even being considered. Apparently, it has been a toxic waste dump area for 60 years or so, that it is on top of a fragile water system, aquifer, spring, wetlands from which Olympia draws its water, that the person who is proposing the development was dumping toxic waste on the site as late as 2015. I'm not sure how he plans to advertise this, if it does go through, but would it be as Olympia's finest toxic waste dump housing development? I think, I think the whole issue is extremely fraught with problems. I think the city would be much wiser to turn that area into a park, to save the water systems there, some of which provide water for Olympia. I'm just really amazed that this is even being considered, and I hope you will all take some time to look further into it and make sure you don't put a housing development on top of toxic waste that can then harm the people who live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose Gunderson, followed by John Pettit.
Thank you, Mayor Selby, and the rest of the council members. I'm Rose Gunderson. I'm a co-founder and board director and a volunteer for Washington Trafficking Prevention. And the local program here is called Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking. First, I want to say thank you to the council, because the last couple of years, the Olympia City Detective has started really proactively investigating and working on cases, and have really come to our coalition to speak on what they're doing and the proactive approach we just really appreciate, because that's been something we've been advocating for. First, I want to talk about Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking's mission is to prevent human trafficking. When we, we can't afford to keep arresting us out of the problem. We have to prevent it through community partnerships. Human trafficking happens in many forms, in the form of labor trafficking and child sex trafficking. Traffickers and buyers of children for sex, and they come from all racial, socioeconomic, and cultural groups. Children who have been trafficked have devastating consequence on them, including long-lasting physical and psychological harm, trauma, disease, or even death. While law enforcement's sting operations locally have repeatedly arrested over 20 people every time for trying to buy sex from children, many people still don't believe it happens here. So we volunteers organize education and fundraising events to provide a take-on program. And we have reached many schools in Thurston County, including Tenino Tom Water and, can't remember, and also the Thurston County Juvenile Center, Boys and Girls Clubs, Big Brothers and Big Sisters, any groups who want us to do a training, we'll do it for free because of the Race Against Trafficking 5K that we offer. Tonight, I want to invite everyone, and Jamie, my other volunteer, is going to pass around flyers, and you can take a picture or take, or take the flyer to post it at work or at a location where you can find it. Two nights from now, we have partnered with Meaningful Movies, this movie called, documentary called Tricked. There will be a panel with Survivor and also police. You can get the flyer and also find us on Facebook, Thurston County Cat. And Pathways for Hope on the 30th. After you learn about the fact that it happens, how can we together, work together to serve victims and when, to get them out of, out of the life? There are so many ways to do it, and we need businesses, concerned citizens, and all sectors to partner together. And thank you so much, because you have done a good job with the homeless issue, and this is another part of working together. Thank you.
Thank you. John Pettit, followed by Ivy Ayers.
Good evening, council. I, my name's John Pettit. I live outside of Olympia, but hope to be moving into Olympia within the next year, six months to a year. I wanted to address, and I've been a little harsh on you in some ways, and in other ways, I'm going to suggest to you that the City of Olympia, your job is, of course, is to take care of the basic fundamental elements of the city. City of Olympia has a homeless issue, but it has a drug issue, and it has other issues. But each issue is addressed through different processes at different levels of government. You guys have been really good at trying to solve a problem that an organization that is already existing has failed miserably at helping to deal with. Thurston County Health Department, the Health Board, they're the ones who are located in this area, this county, as a source to get funding down from the state. You guys don't have a Health Department. They have a Health Department. And as much as what it is, I, I won't take my other previous things back. Yes, I do believe you need to enforce all the laws fully. I do believe that we need to take people who are selling drugs to our children and put them in jail, people that are stealing, get rid of that. None of that's part of what you'd call a good culture. But I think you should take action actually against the Board of Health of Thurston County, file lawsuit against them, to make them actually have to step up to the plate and do their job. job to take care of the homeless issue. Now, on a secondary note here, I happened to see, have one wanted to talk about, oh, it's a happy, wonderful thing to talk about a courthouse. But I also hear these words, and you even had someone up here with a presentation earlier about affordable housing. I think it's about 53% of your people in this city live in rentals. What happens when a landlord has a tax increase? They raise in a disproportional level to the tenants. So if what you want to do is burden every renter in this city with another $50 to $100 a month worth of expense for housing, you're doing exactly the opposite for affordable housing, should you decide to help be encouraging a courthouse facility. You can't do both. You either need to step up and take your position, affordable housing's important, or you need to take a position that it doesn't matter to you, that you just want another new building put in here. You have to figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker this evening is Ivy Ayers. Oh, no, she, yep, all right. So, she's no longer in the building, sounds like. All right. So, any questions or comments from the dais regarding public comment this evening? All right, all good. All right, so I need a motion to approve tonight's consent calendar.
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments, or polls?
I would like to comment on 4B, and I have a question about 4D.
Okay, do you want to take care, is it okay if we just take care of those first before we vote on the final? All right, so, why don't we talk about, anyone else got anything else? All right. So item 4B is approval of the bid award for Legion Way Improvement Projects.
And I just wanted to appreciate that we're, we're making an award not to the lowest, the very lowest bidder, but the lowest responsible bidder, that the cost to us of accepting a bid that becomes a problematic project, you know, outweighs what, what little we might save. So I, I just appreciate that, that staff's recommendation was somebody who was actually the third one down the line of the dollar amounts of the bid opening, but definitely looked like, uh, much more likely to succeed and be on budget project. So I appreciate that decision, and I, I really support that. May I move on to 4D?
Can I add one thing to 4B? Because I almost pulled up for comment two is, this is a big project for downtown, it's many blocks along Legion Way, and it's very exciting, it's been a long time coming, so I wanted to know what the timing was, if we had that yet, when the construction would start? Because it's going to affect a lot of businesses, and so it's going to be really important that we mitigate somehow that people can still get to those businesses that, while they're open and...
Well, good evening, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Rich Hoy, Public Works Director. And Kelly, if I may, I just wanted to just take a moment to talk just briefly about the scope of the project, if I could. So tonight before you is the bid award for the Legion Way Improvements Project. We're recommending award of the construction project to Roglands Incorporated, as outlined in your staff report. So briefly, the, the scope of the project is to complete street improvements on Legion Way, right in the core of downtown, between Franklin Street and Water Street. And the most significant part of the project is what's shown on the screen, and that is a, a new raised concrete intersection at the intersection of Washington and Legion. We'll also be doing some repaving between Franklin and Capitol, as well as re-striping on the stretch from Water Street up to Capitol so that we can fit in a bike lane. It's a popular bike route, people going east to west. So this is a, an exciting project, it's a significant one for downtown, and it's really the first in a series of transportation projects downtown that were envisioned in the downtown strategy. So, you know, just briefly on the schedule, we're, we'll be needing to sit down with the contractor and kind of go through the details of that, but we're anticipating it'll approximately start around the beginning of March, and our goal is to complete the work by Lake Fair. So we're hoping to keep a pretty confined construction schedule. While there's a lot of excitement about the project, we also know that there are impacts, especially when you're constructing in a downtown core like this. And so we've been doing quite a bit of outreach with the businesses in that area about what's happening. We're also excited that we've reached out and are working with the Olympia Downtown Alliance on marketing and outreach that's really aimed at helping to support the, the businesses during construction. So you'll, you'll be seeing more about that, and I'm grateful to Kelly that she's going to be leading our staff team that's engaging with the ODA on that. And so, assuming that the council moves forward with the bid award, we'll sit down with the contractor, work out the detailed schedule and the approach to the project, and what we'd like to do is, as we're getting close to when construction is going to start, come back and make an announcement, share more details about that during the announcements portion of a council meeting. So hopefully by the, towards the tail end of February, we'll be able to do that. With that, I'll take any questions.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Rich? We have to let Process of the Species know.
Actually, thank you, I, I meant to mention that. As part of the specifications that we put out, knowing where this is, right by Sylvester Park downtown, included in the specifications is, is the importance to work with the festivals that are going to be happening while the construction's happening. So the marathon, arts walk, also junior programs, all the buses that access the Washington Center. So we've been anticipating that and have built-in provisions for that, so thank you for mentioning it.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Gilman, you had another question or comment?
I did. Do you have a video about 4D?
4D?
No. So on the, um, so the, the approval to lease property adjacent to Yom Highway to Spooner Farm, really it was just a question of, I believe we're several years out from developing the park, but it looks like this is a single-year lease. So the, the question was about the, the likely duration or term of continuing to lease the Strawberry Patch to Spooner Farms.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Jonathan Turlov, I'm the Director of Park Planning and Maintenance, and, yeah, so we, yes, that's correct, it's just a one-year lease, this is, this is renewing the one-year lease, so we leased it to them last year, the lease expires at the end of January, and so we're just doing a yearly lease, and it's set up to be able to easily renew each year. So the, we're in the middle of a master planning process right now, we've had a onsite meeting that was really well attended by the public, we've had online input and, excuse me, and so we're just sort of in the midst of that process, we probably are four to five years out from the first phase of developing that park, and so in the intervening years, the Spooners are very interested in continuing their U-Pick Strawberry Farm there, and so it's, that, it tells us it's a win-win thing. I know it's a beloved institution in the community, and it's land that we don't then have to be maintaining or mowing, and so we, our intention would be to renew this lease each year until that point that we're, we're developing it.
Thank you for the clarification, Jonathan.
You bet.
All right, all good? Everybody, all right. We're voting on the motion to accept tonight's consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have consent calendar approved, which takes us to other business this evening, item 6A, which is getting a presentation on the East Side SubArea Plan. Just for some background, the city of Olympia's comprehensive plan allows for and encourages grassroots, a grassroots process where local residents, businesses, and community organizations work together in partnership with the city to help shape how neighborhoods grow and develop. I think this is the second of our subarea, actually, if you count the downtown strategy, the third of our subarea planning coming out of the comp plan. So with that, I'd like to invite Lydia Morehead, who's Associate Planner in Community Planning and Development, to tee this up for us.
Thank you, Mayor Selby, and council members. Again, Lydia Morehead with Community Planning and Development. I also serve as a neighborhood liaison, and it's my pleasure to bring to you the subarea plan tonight. We also have two or three representatives from the East Side Core Planning Team in attendance, Jim Sweeney, Roger Horn, and Cheryl Bale. Jim and Roger are happy to take any questions you have. Just a little bit of background before we get into the plan. The city's comp plan allows for, comprehensive plan allows for and encourages grassroots process where neighborhoods work together to plan for future growth and development. Our comprehensive plan acknowledges that each neighborhood is unique and envisioned a planning process where the needs of specific subareas can be individually addressed. The mission of the subarea planning is to further the goals, policies, and values of the Olympia Comprehensive Plan at a neighborhood level. Some of you may remember the ONA SubArea Plan. This was the first subarea plan accepted by the city council in 2016. The ONA Plan encompassed an area made up of five recognized neighborhood associations and served as an example to the East Side neighborhood as they began. The East Side Neighborhood Plan is a bit different from the ONA Plan, it encompasses only one recognized neighborhood area rather than five. And the draft plan includes substantially more detailed goals, policies, and action steps. It also includes specific implementation-related terms for each action step, short, medium, and long-term. And the Planning Commission reviews subarea plans for consistency with comprehensive plan, and then the final subarea plan is accepted by the city council. Once accepted, the plan can inform city decision-making, including planning efforts, policymaking, and capital facilities projects. The city may also partner in helping a subarea move forward their goals by providing technical assistance, grant opportunities, and data. Here's a map of the East Side neighborhood. Its boundaries are Fourth Avenue to the north, Chambers Street and Boulevard Road to the east, I-5 to the south, and East Side Street to the west. The planning effort began with two guiding documents, a SubArea Plan Charter and the mayor's acknowledgment letter. These two documents outlined expectations for the subarea planning process, roles for the neighborhood and city, and what elements the plan would include. The Charter and Acknowledgement Letter from Mayor Selby served as guiding documents for the planning effort. Over the past two and a half years, the planning process has followed and substantially met most of the elements outlined in these documents. The East Side SubArea Core Team was formed in July of 2017. The E&amp;A Board and Core Team started the process by looking at the ONA Plan, including a retrospective Lessons Learned document that was produced after the ONA Plan in order to learn from previous experiences. A launch meeting was held, and a planning committee was created on August 16, 2017. Following this, a communications plan was developed to direct outreach and engagement, identify stakeholders and potential partners, and establish a variety of outreach methods to gain input and to inform the neighborhood of progress. Over the course of the neighborhood's planning efforts, four town hall meetings were held and five online surveys were conducted to gain input on the neighborhood's priorities. Town halls and surveys were held throughout the planning effort, which helped the group refine and prioritize specific action steps along the way. A culmination of the town halls and surveys can be found in Exhibit 3 of the plan. Town halls were held locally and at varied times to gain as much attendance as possible. Neighborhood signs and direct mailings, which went out to renters and owners, were used in addition to the website and social media to inform residents of meetings and surveys, as well as to prevent new, to present new information for public review. Initial responses to the surveys and town hall meetings created the foundation of the plan and the neighborhood's priorities. Action plans were developed from these priorities and reflected the initial public input. A draft plan was posted on the website, and public review was conducted, and was, and the plan was presented to the E&amp;A Board at their September 18, 2019 meeting. Four action plans were created to cover specific priorities that came from the initial public input. Those action plans cover housing density growth and neighborhood character, public work services and infrastructure, crime prevention and safety enhancement, and community connections. For each of these action plans, there are goals, policies, and action steps that identify specific tasks, potential partners, and designates each step as near, medium, or long-term for implementation purposes. Once the plan was pulled together and refined, staff has worked with the Core Planning Team to review the plan, revise where needed, and to assist with formal acceptance. The city's, city staff has reviewed the action items in August and September. Council of Neighborhood Associations has seen the plan in September. The Planning Commission reviewed the plan in October of 2019, and the Land Use and Environment Committee in October as well. The Land Use and Environment Committee recommended that the city council accept the East Side Area Plan, SubArea Plan, and that brings us to you this evening. Discussions are taking place within the East Side Neighborhood Association about next steps and how to keep momentum moving forward with implementation. I've been told that the first implementation team meeting has already been scheduled. An implementation plan will be developed by the Core Team to help direct future efforts on action items to help track progress, establish clear systems for updates, and to make it easier for members to step into their areas of interest. We appreciate the opportunity to present this to you, and would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you so much. I'll open it up. I got Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Madron.
So, I, I want to start by saying that the Land Use Committee enthusiastically supported this coming to council. In, in each of our efforts at facilitating subarea planning, things have become more refined, and in, in this particular plan, the, the outreach effort far surpassed what we've seen before. The, the description within the report, the, the survey and description of the neighborhood is, is really helpful work to know, you know, who your neighborhood is you're talking about, and the, the action plans help us to nail down what's been most challenging in these efforts, which is, okay, so the neighborhood gets together and comes up with a plan, how does that interface with us, or staff, or Planning Commission? And they've, they've really narrowed down what sort of actions from the city, or when they think that they should be consulted by the city, or, or bring their experience. So, so I, I just, I just want to call out each of those, those attributes of this plan that I think really make it a strong document and a, a living document that's, that's a good platform for actually seeing action and, and good conversation happen. So thank you for the work so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Madron.
I really enjoyed reading through the plan, it's really great to see this kind of stewardship coming from the neighborhood itself. I do have a question around, I read a lot about wanting to have a diverse neighborhood and diverse participation, and I'm curious if any statistics were gathered in your outreach in terms of who was participating, and things I would be, you know, and, 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 you know, something also to just think about moving forward, to make sure that, you know, you know who you're hearing from, and things I would be interested in include, you know, ages of people, whether they're renters or owners, if they have children, if they have mobility needs, stuff like that. So was there any, any data like that that was captured throughout the process?
We do have numbers, like a head count for each town hall and survey, but I'll, did you want to expound on any information you collected?
We did not include that type of data in our surveys, we were more interested in what part of the neighborhood people lived in, but we did rely pretty heavily on information available through the census.
Okay. Okay, record, can you introduce?
I'm sorry, Jim Sweeney. I live in the East Side.
Are you good?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have a feedback?
It's, it's an amazing document, and I think it does set up, each time we learn more and more through this process, so future neighborhood associations can take this as their template and, and run with it, and it just makes it easier to expedite the process, not just for staff, but for the, the neighborhoods. I had a question, what were your biggest areas of disagreement?
That's a tough one. I wouldn't say we had any great disagreement, we had some issues to work through. Crime and safety was a huge issue when we... Crime and safety was a huge issue when we started, and it seemed like, if you think back to 2015, 2016, I think that was a bigger issue than it is in 2019, 2020.
That's good to hear.
Yeah. But one of the facts that came out of our research was that, overall, crime statistics in our little neighborhood have actually decreased. So, we've seen improvement there. So, I think, I'm not sure who gets the credit, but we're very thankful to have the police neighborhood patrols, for example.
Right. So, the public safety measure passed in 2017, and so those new patrols are now up and running.
Right.
So, that helps. Councilmember Partially.
Sorry, chiming in a little late. I've been pondering this, is when I ran for office, the ONA Subarea Planning was in process. And then, reading through this and being part of it in land use, I'm also part of the Climate Mitigation Planning Steering Committee for the county, and we already have an adaptation plan. I'm just curious, it would be interesting to get the two sub-area groups together to help us plan for the future, because a lot of our climate mitigation and adaptation is going to have to not be in the city. It's going to have to be in our neighborhoods and our community, and maybe how these sub-area planning, as they go forward, could refer to climate mitigation, climate adaptation. You have a lot of elements in there. You talk about multimodal transportation, saving the natural environment, getting off local septics onto sewers and drainage basins. So, you already have a lot of those elements, but actually formulating and into an acknowledgement that this is a climate mitigation adaptation helps the neighbors and the neighborhoods understand that they actually have a huge role in our plans in the future. So, it'd just be interesting to see what these two groups could say, that the future ones maybe have to call out a little more what their steps in their planning is going to do for our plans that are climate-associated.
Thank you for that. And then I've got Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I continue to be impressed with the level of detail that neighborhoods are putting into their plan. I just wanted to see if you could tell me a little bit about what you see as the, you know, create the implementation plan step and sort of that, what comes after today. Tell us a little bit about that process. And then, for Lydia, what neighborhood is left is next?
We have a core team that's been involved right along. We've had a few personnel changes, but just a very effective group. And Roger, who's sitting in the back there, could probably speak on this better than I could, but he has agreed that we will continue basically with that core group as an implementation team. And one of our efforts, I'm sure, will be to bring in more volunteers, because when it comes to implementation, I think that's the key. Whether it's the core team, or the planning group, or the E&amp;A Board, for example, our goal is to reach out and bring in more folks, regular folks from the neighborhood, even if they only have a single issue. We'd like to engage them and say, if you have a little bit of time and a little bit of initiative, talk to your neighbors and maybe take on this particular action step, for example. And what we're planning on doing, I think, is tracking those efforts and developing metrics, so we can report back to you in a couple of years and say, we've been successful in these areas, and we still have work to do.
Great.
Oh, your own little neighborhood dashboard.
Yes.
Yeah, there you go. And closing comments from me, I just wanted to also, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that's right.
Well, we don't have a neighborhood yet that has expressed a desire to do a sub-area plan. One thing that is unique about the Olympia's process is it is very neighborhood-driven, and it requires a group of people committed to doing a great amount of work over a long period of time. And so, we hope to have another retrospective lessons-learned document produced from this so that the next sub-area will be able to learn from what we've done here.
Thank you. Thanks for that. Just wanted to close in thanking you that you included emergency planning as well. I mean, when you have this type of deep dive with a neighborhood area, and it's like taking advantage of those connections that you make at all these meetings for folks to get to know each other and then feel comfortable, you know, contacting each other about Map Your Neighborhood, that program. So, I just really strongly encourage the E&amp;A to continue forward with your emergency planning. And then I can't go without acknowledging former councilmember Steve Langer, that he's the Lorax, and he's also from up the street, thanking us very much for putting in the tree canopy and the tree management, street tree part of the planning as well. Your neighborhood's very well-known for the beautiful street trees, and so I want to keep those going. All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you so much.
Do you need a?
Oh, I'm sorry. We do, I need a motion to accept the Eastside Subarea Plan as recommended by the Land Use and Environment Committee.
So moved.
Second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's accepted. So, thank you so, so much. So, we don't have anything else on our other business agenda, so I've got a few things on my mayor's report, and then we'll go down the line. You've probably already received this with your utility bill, utility billing. We've got our five things out for January and February, so make sure you call attention to the recycling changes are definitely top of mind for a lot of folks in Olympia, in that we no longer are doing residential pickup with the glass. The glass cannot be commingled anymore in our residential recycling. So, there is information here on where you can take your glass, and hopefully, and over the next year or so, we'll figure out another option besides having you having to take it yourselves. But in the meantime, it's really important that it's still recyclable, we just can't pick it up with our trucks. And then, as well, upcoming, we have our annual Point in Time Count, which is a census of our unhoused populations in Thurston County. They definitely need volunteers, and there's a lot of information. This is not an easy-to-remember website, but you can just go to the Thurston County website and, I think, drill down and find it. But it's P.I.T., for like Point in Time Census Team, at co.thurston.wa.us. So, you can find out how you can help us count our unhoused individuals in the county so that we can understand more about what's going on with our unsheltered populations, and as well have the numbers that we can go back to our state and our federal funders to figure out ways that we can help get funding to help those populations. And then, as well, with the hazardous weather task force is up and running, and it's called Cold Blue when it gets this cold for this long. And so, there are many night and daytime shelters that are opening up this week, and there's a list of those as well. I don't have a website for all the shelters where they're listed, but that should be on the Thurston County website as well. Do we have a link on our city website to where Cold Weather Shelter is?
We'll find a home for it and make sure it's up there.
Yeah, that would be great, to put that link on the landing page. So, that's all I have for my report. Any questions? Oh, I should just report out that we did meet for our council retreat on Friday and Saturday, and we'll be bringing forward our yearly calendar and our council committee assignments next week. Any questions? All right, I'll go to my left, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Just two things tonight. So, the first one is the Solid Waste Advisory Committee met last week. We elected officers, and they elected George Chulley as the chair, and then Councilmember Joan Cathy from Tumwater is the vice chair. We also had a very drawn-out conversation. So, as you know, the county has been working on updating the solid waste management plan since early 2015, and we are at a point now, and I will quote the representative, the regional person for Department of Ecology in charge of these plans, who said, "What you have now does not reflect the current landscape or the values of your community." And so, it is on the table that we may very well be starting over. So, I wanted to let everyone know that, though we are sort of calling it a hybrid between starting over and finishing, because we will start over with essentially the work product we have now and bring it into modern times and do that. But that's what's being talked about, and after next month's meeting, I'll know what choice has been solidified by the SWAC and the county staff. It will likely take through, I believe it's through the fall of 2021 to finish that process, though it's only about six months longer than it would take us to keep going with what we have currently. So, that's that. And then, the Olympic Region Cleaner Agency, I apologize, this is a little bit nerdy, but since I've been on the committee or on the board, about eight years ago, or seven years ago, we started what's called a saturation study. And so, in every county, we put out a series of air monitors, one county at a time. So, we have one air monitor location, that's the official one for the county. And in Thurston County, it's at Lydia Hawk Elementary School in Lacey. And so, the saturation study is to validate that the official monitor is in the right place. And so, we'll put in about four monitors in a county, and for a whole course of a year, look at the data from those four monitors and the one that we have in place to see if they correlate, and then look at maybe reciting it. And so, we've gone through five or six counties now, including Thurston County was last year. And at our meeting last week, staff proposed, and this is really fascinating, that we will now be able to move to having a saturation study in real time. And so, if you can think about, the Olympic region is the entire peninsula, from Pacific County north, from the Puget Sound west. And it takes a little over a decade to go through the saturation study one county at a time. And so, there's a new product on the market that's called a Purple Air Monitor, and it's a consumer home air monitor that you could put on the side of your garage, and it talks to a database on the internet and provides real-time data from all of the purple air monitors in the nation. Well, there's enough of them in our region now that we will be able to buy some of our own, and when we look at saturation studies, actually use the data that's existing to do real-time saturation studies, so we don't have to buy, because we put in four monitors and support them and all the tech and, you know, all the stuff that goes along with that. And then, the really cool part is, we will have a calculation that we'll be able, you'll be able to enter the numbers you're getting from your purple air monitor at your house, if you had one, and it'll translate it so that it matches the official Department of Ecology monitoring station in your county. And so, you'll be able to see how your house compares with the official station, say, at Lydia Hawk Elementary School. So, happy to talk more offline if you want to hear more about it, but I was really excited about the fact that we'll be able to actually be able to have this data and validate where our monitors are located in real time without having to go through this, you know, big, long, drawn-out process in a different county every year.
Any questions for Councilmember Cooper? Just a couple of comments. So, kind of serious, kind of not. It's like, we already have Siri, we have Alexa, we have all these things monitoring our activities in our home. They couldn't partner with an existing?
This is already a company that has been doing it, so we're not even partnering with them. We're just using the data that's available.
Okay.
But, good point.
Can we order from Amazon through the purple monitor?
You can order it from Amazon.
Yeah, just tell your monitor.
And maybe buy it somewhere local, hopefully.
Yeah, exactly. All right. And thanks again for stepping into the leadership at the SWAC. It's very desperately needed, as we all know. So, thank you. Councilmember Partially.
I have one thing to report. I attended the Parking and Business Advisory Board with the mayor, and a large portion of that meeting was involved in a discussion and a vote eventually on the recommendation of the Downtown Improvement District eventually to the council. It took quite a bit of time, and there was a lot of thoughtful discussion. The PBIA Advisory Board has voted with a majority to support the Improvement District, but they are going to be providing to council both the majority opinion as well as the minority opinion, so that we can get a flavor of the discussion based on the letters that we will be receiving. So, as a whole, the majority of the PBIA has voted to support the Downtown Improvement District. Because that took up a majority of the meeting, we only were able to cover one more agenda item, which is, they, at the last bit of their money for 2019, employed a marketing consultant to get a campaign going that would be designed to hopefully go viral on the social media, and the hashtag is going to be #WhyIGoDowntown. And we hopefully will be seeing at recognition some of the product of this, and I don't want to ruin it, because it's really, really well-done. And even the PBIA Board was much more impressed than they thought they would be, based on what the product they got for the amount of money they spent. So, hopefully, in the next few council meetings, you'll be seeing this at the recognition.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Partially? Councilmember Gilman?
I'm just wondering if the PBIA's support for the Downtown Improvement District, were they considering that we would be sunsetting the PBIA if this?
Yes, that was discussed.
Thank you.
It would obviously come subsequent or after.
Yeah.
You know, anything we did is a formal ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to note that we, oh, Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, will the council get a chance to weigh in on that new package before it goes into a?
Oh, yeah. We will be having a study session, at which we've already asked both Daniel Ruse and hopefully the vice chair, Jeff, to be there, so that they can voice their opinions, as we also talk to the Downtown Alliance.
Great. And hopefully, they'll give Meg Martin credit for creating.
Oh, yeah, they have a big plan. They have a big plan about how they want to do this recognition.
Great.
Believe me, Meg's going to be called out.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Protem Bateman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Gilman?
So, I'm just, I'm going to step back to comment on Jim's Purple Air. That's pretty interesting. A citizen scientist $250 monitor that Weather Underground publishes on their map, along with all the weather stations. It's just, that's very cool, very cool opportunity. Two meetings I wanted to touch on. Today, I attended Salvation Army-led visioning discussion about shelter and housing downtown that had several local government and nonprofit folks at the table. And there are two more of those conversations coming up, and there'll be two more council members participating in that conversation. So, I was glad for that. And last night, Mayor Protem Bateman and I met with the local Strengthening Sanctuary Alliance and with their statewide umbrella organization, the Washington Immigrant Solidarity Network. They both wanted to appreciate that our December 2016 Sanctuary City Resolution was a very important tool for them in going out to other cities, both in eastern and western Washington, to make the case and to say it's possible to do it. So, they were very appreciative, both of Jessica's research and work to formulate our resolution, and that we were willing to take a stand so quickly at that point. They spoke to us last night about a proclamation that is in the works, and hopefully you'll support, to recognize February 5th as Immigrant and Refugee Advocacy Day. So, that'll be coming our way soon.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Gilman? Mayor Protem Bateman?
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman, for that great summary. I will also say that we were quite impressed with the staff that they have with them last night that were visiting with us as guests, but it was really an honor for us to hear their stories and their history working within that movement for decades. There is a hotline for individuals to report if they think that ICE is in the neighborhood, and it's available on their website, it's 1-844-7. Actually, it's on my iPad, it's not actually able for me to see it. But go to the Washington Immigrant Solidarity Network, and you can see, and then I think, actually, I'd like to see if there's some images that we can provide for what to do if you actually think that ICE is in your neighborhood, and we could provide that information on our website. And then, they are actually working with, I don't know which legislator, but they're working on a bill that would actually provide requirements for ICE. If they were to come to a county courthouse, they would have to check in with the administration first before they could enter. So, they're really trying to create clear processes for how ICE can actually work within our county and our cities. And then, also with the Keep Washington Working, which we all signed on to a letter last year, a part of that piece of legislation actually prohibits counties from having contracts with ICE, which will be taking effect very soon. So, that's something we weren't aware of, and we thought that was a really great way to come at that as well. So, it was a really great meeting, and there's more work to be done. And that February 5th, Immigrant and Refugee Advocacy Day, I'm sorry, they're going to have a rally on, I keep, on the Capitol Hill for people that want to go. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that forward. Thank you for bringing that forward to council. Councilmember Rollins?
Thank you. Just one item to report. Yesterday, the 13th, the Community Investment Partnership met, and essentially just getting briefed a little bit ahead of our February meeting, where we make decisions about the RFP that's going to be going out for the dollars available. The essence of the briefing is that there's just a few hundred thousand dollars available this year, because we're in the middle of the two-year cycle for the capital projects pipeline. So, there will be an RFP, there will be important decisions being made for the next year's cycle, but just not as much money this year, because projects are in process. That's that.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Rollins? Councilmember Bateman? Up, Madron. I don't know what, I was like.
Nothing to report.
Sorry. I don't know where that came from. All right. Our interim city manager, Jay Burney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick update on something that just came up. So, the Proclamation for Recognizing Refugee Advocacy Day is on your February 4th council agenda under special recognition, so the day before.
All right.
I have nothing else to report?
Excellent, with no further business.
I have a question.
Oh, Councilmember?
I was just curious, I don't see it on the long-term schedule, if we were able to find a place for the Friends of Rocky Prairie Resolution?
That is in process right now, I'm working it.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks for that. Going, going. All right, with no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.